Okay, we have 6:34. We will call the January 23, 2023 City of Mayor, City Council meeting to order. If we could start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda tonight?
Uh, no changes to the agenda tonight.
I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda tonight, please come forward. And seeing none, we'll close public comments and we will move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to number 10, Consider Adoption Resolution Providing the Sale of a $7,750,000 General Obligation Reconstruction Bond Series 2023A. And we have Todd Hagan here from Ellers and Associates.
Thank you, Mayor. Am I coming in okay? Everything's good? Can you hear me? All right. Thank you, council members, mayor, staff. Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates, your financial advisor out of beautiful downtown Roseville. And and so I'm here tonight to present sort of the, just the very first part of kind of getting the bond started. And it's called the pre-sale report. You've seen this before from the Fire Hall and numerous projects in Mayor. So what we do is, is start out, kind of talk about the bond issue, kind of the terms and conditions as we move forward. I'm up for questions, like we've all done before, in between or after. And then at the end, looking for a couple considerations for the council. One to allow Ellers to move forward with competitively selling the bonds out into the public market. And then there's a second piece to this would be calling or setting a sale or setting a public hearing for the street reconstruction plan. And so that's kind of the, the road we're going down. There is a schedule towards the end too. When we get to that, we'll kind of show you what, what that looks like. So it's going to be a little while till we sell bonds. Rates are going down though, a little bit. So it's a little bit different in the bond market. It's more supply and demand for bonds. So there's not a whole lot of supply out there and demand is huge. So a lot of the bonds that are out there that we're selling are getting lots and lots of bids. So that's good. The market's hungry. We seem to be selling just a lot of school district bonds lately, large ones. And that's what we're seeing, many, many, many bids. So even a bond of this size of 775,000, 15 years, you're, you've got quite a high bond rating here at double A. So that should, should be good. And by the time we get this up and, and running for the bond sale, hopefully you'll be one of the ones first out of the chute. So everybody will be, you know, clamoring on to Mayor, right? So, so this started out, we did some structuring with Nick's help and the engineers, right, that kind of put this together and let us know what the amount is and, and what we're doing. So I know there's some street maintenance projects, right, for 2023. There's a Public Works building as well. So we had to kind of move things around a little bit, like what would be paid with cash, you know, existing levies, all that stuff, you know, sale of the old Fire Hall for the Public Works, things like that. On pins and needles a little bit in, in the office with staff here to kind of figure out, you know, if that Public Works bid, now how that looks, right? You guys talked about that already. And then it was my kind of job then to sort of move the shelves around a little bit and kind of figure out between seal coating and milling overlay, right, and Public Works addition and some patch, street patching, what would be best suited for cash and what would be best suited for issuing a bond. So we decided on milling overlay is, is the winner for the bonds. And, and we are using a little bit of cash as well for this. There's existing street levy. We're using a little bit what's left over on that. That's not going to be used for the patching and the seal coating. A little bit of ARPA funds from COVID that you guys have still on that. And then you have a street improvement fund that's got a few, you know, a little over a hundred thousand dollars in that. So, so we're trying to finance 706,530. And, and, and so that's, that's, that's where we're at with a $775,000 bond here. So the path that we're going to take, because we're not special assessing for this, right, is street reconstruction plan bonds. And so we're going to be a full levy throughout the city, general property tax levy to pay for this. But we first have to go through a street reconstruction plan process and kind of let a 30-day sort of reverse referendum period lapse after the public hearing. And then we can kind of start selling bonds. So it'll be a little while yet. We kind of a month in between to let that part kind of settle. So after we set the public hearing, we're looking at February 27th for that to be held. We're looking at that reverse referendum period ending on like March 29th or so. And then we can sell bonds on April 10th and close them on April 27th. We could move that schedule up probably a couple of weeks because it's only a 10-day notice in the newspaper. But I just kind of wanted to give us a little breathing room there, just in case we need to adjust something that we're not so tight with that 10-day notice and things like that. So that can be done, but if you're okay with April 10th for a bond sale and April 27th for the money to come in, this is fine. Again, the other schedule would just be two weeks up. So it's not a whole lot of extra, extra time. This bond is, you know, subject to the net debt limit of 3% of the city. And even your Fire Hall bond wasn't subject to that with all your sort of contracts that you've got with other entities. So this is really almost only, the only one that's really subject to the net debt limit. You have plenty of capacity there because the City of Mayor has lots of taxing authority. So you're good. You're good there. And it will be bank qualified, tax exempt. So it'll be tax exempt plus it's small enough to be bank qualified. So if banks kind of get into this, maybe with a broker dealer, they have the ability to deduct up to 80% or so of the interest expense on this too. So that should bring the interest rate down a little bit. And we will get it rated. It's kind of one of those, it's kind of teetering on, should we get it rated or not? It's still worth it. The cost to get it rated for a $775,000 bond for 15 years. So we'll go down that path. And I know staff is probably excited to get on those rating calls and things like that. But we'll get that all set up for you. And it's, it's easy peasy now. They give us the questions ahead of time. I think Nick is pretty familiar with that process. Talked about the method of sale being public sale. We always take a look at your existing debt and guess what? Rates are too high to refund anything right now. And we already did a lot of that. So, so we're keeping an eye on it still just in case, but we're, we're good there. Because like we've done in the past, we could bundle some refinancings in with this too. And rates are just a little bit too high for that because we've done all our homework. Investment of bond proceeds on this. I think Nick has talked to our investment advisors that came through today, going on their way to Madison to present what the City of Madison is doing as far as investment earnings. And then I'm going to meet those guys in Crixton tomorrow. Yes, it's Crixton. It's a long ways. So I have to wake up early tomorrow morning and go to Crixton. So, so, so we'll be doing that tomorrow too with the investment folks. Other than that, you know, we're going to use TAFT as your bond counsel like we've used before. Bond Trust Services will be your pain agent and they'll invoice the city. Jano will be happy about that as usual. And Standard Porches is our, our rating agency. And Nick's got the schedule up there. So, so yeah, we'll just kind of keep going through that process. You know, you guys will see a notice going into the paper, kind of like the capital improvement plan notice we did for the Fire Hall. This is a street reconstruction plan, same concept. And, and then we'll just kind of let things go through that process. And, and we will sell bonds for you in, in April. So attached also to the pre-sale reports is kind of a preliminary bond schedule. We do have that, a little 75 basis points cushion on that. So I mean, rates aren't too bad. I mean, our analysts added point seven five percent to all the rates. And, and so I don't know if you took that off and brought, brought the average rate down. You're looking at three and a quarter or something like that for 15. So the sky is not falling. It's, it's all good. You'll be happy that you're doing this now, maybe rather than later or, you know, waiting too long. And, and things get really expensive project wise too. So I've got a little chart too that just sort of shows the 30-year bond buyer index. And it's gone, yeah, it's gone. You can see at the end there, I've got it kind of wonky there, but at the end it's, it shows it. Good luck with that. I thought I was, you know, I was kind of keep it, yeah, there it is. Just that, that end part there. Seems like it's coming down a little bit. So I don't know. Longer we wait, maybe the better it's going to be. So, so that just shows the 30-year. Not too bad. Looks like my heart rate. EKG or whatever that is. So yeah, so we've got a couple of resolutions for you guys to consider. I am up for questions. You will see a draft of the street reconstruction finance plan. I'll send that to Nick. Probably I'll be on the road tomorrow, but maybe on Wednesday or something for his comments. And that'll just be at City Hall on file while the notice is in the paper. So some, anybody can come and take a look at it. It's, it's not rocket science. With the help of Oatman Inc., we've got a nice map and stuff that kind of shows where things are. Guess the general public wants to walk in and take a look at it. Other than that, any, any questions?
Straightforward to me.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thanks for the business and always turning to, you know, the man. Yeah, great.
Okay, so with that, Nick, are we looking for a motion to? We're not adopting a resolution today, correct?
Yes, so.
We are.
Two resolutions we're looking to adopt today, today would be the I'm sure I got the right one here. Yes. First one calls the public hearing on the intent to issue general obligation street reconstruction plan bonds and the proposed to adopt a street construction finance plan. So this one sets the public hearing for, that we just talked about for the February 27th on that. So that would be that resolution. Where's? The one before that? I had another one prepared. Ah, here it is. Sorry. It was before the pre-sale report.
Sorry, sorry. Didn't see the numbers.
Yeah, yeah. It was before the pre-sale report. My apologies. So 2023-7 resolution providing for the sale of the $775,000 GO street reconstruction plan bond series 2013A that Todd just talked about.
Look for that motion to approve resolution 2023-7.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Then that will move us to
This is the resolution calling for the public hearing.
Yep. Look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-8, calling for public hearing on the intent to issue GO and street reconstruction plan bonds and the proposal to adopt a street reconstruction finance plan.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Perfect. And again, thank you, Todd, for your help. I appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, Nick, that'll take us to the adoption of ordinance 236, amending the zoning map and of city code 152 by rezoning from R1 low-density residential to District, PI Public Institutional District for the Mayor Luthrin project.
This is the same ordinance that was introduced at the last meeting. So this would be when we adopt it. And then once it's published in the paper, then it becomes law.
Correct. Thank you. Any questions on that? I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 236.
Motion.
We have a motion. Councilmember, how do we have a second?
A second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. And we'll move to 13, Consider the Adoption of Ordinance 237, Amending the Fee Schedule.
So after the input we had from the last council meeting with the changes you guys were looking to make, those have been incorporated in here. One, just a last minute change I'd like to make. It's going to be found on the administration's side of the, of fee schedule. And under liquor licenses, we had these two where it spelled a nonprofit temporary intoxicating liquor licenses, 32 beer license and, and then the 32, proposing that we update those just to have, sorry. This here, which says all temporary seasonal licenses and permits will be $15. That encompasses the intent of what we're going for and it will condense some space. And just in case, if we have things coupled with like the strong beer license, the malt liquor license for the baseball club, and we transition to that. And then we also do one day on sale, our one day consumption and display permits, which weren't listed on our fee schedule. So that ties them in there as well.
All right, we'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 237, amending the fee schedule with proposed change that the city administrator just identified by combining the nonprofit temporary on sale and the temporary on sale intoxication liquor license together.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. And I will move to consider approval of quotes for testing service for the Public Works Building Project.
As part of construction projects, you typically get an engineering firm that provides construction materials testing and onsite inspection to make sure everything's up to spec. So we have done the same for this project. We obtained three quotes, one from AET, one from Intertech PSI, and one from Independent Testing and Technologies. We had the architect take a look at all three quotes, just make, to make sure we're getting apples to apples. And he says, yep, they're all about the same. So they're, we're recommending going with independent testing technologies as the lowest quote in the amount of $6,780.
Questions for the city administrator? Now look for a motion to approve awarding independent testing technologies in the amount of $6,780 for the Public Works additional testing services.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Consider approval of credit card policy update.
This was brought up at one of the workshops a month or so ago, probably, no, two months ago at this point. We had to take a look at updating the credit card policy from the old version that we had. Not a whole lot of changes since we looked at it the last time. Before adopting it, the last go-around, we wanted to make sure that we finalized how many cards we're going to go out with the city. And it's going to be the same three that were with the previous program. The new cards are with Security Bank and Trust through our local bank before they were from a company, which would charge us finance, fees and things like that. Security Bank and Trust won't. We'll have, we have access to the online portal so I can directly track which cards are spending what. And then it will automatically be deducted each month. So we will, we'll avoid any future finance charges. And then we'll also be implementing the credit card expense report. So we'll have, it's a very simple report where you, anybody who purchases anything, they have to supply their receipts. And then they fill out this form with their line item just to tie it into the account to make sure we can put it into our accounting system clean and easy.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll look for a motion to approve the credit card policy update.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to resolution 2023-9, Calling a Public Hearing on the Facility Plan for the Wastewater Treatment System.
So this resolution calls a public hearing to be held on February 13th during a regular council meeting to invite the public to come in to see the wastewater facility treatment plan that Chris and Jennifer are about to present during our workshop.
Then I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-9.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. And with that, that'll take us to city council reports. Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
No, I do want to thank Public Works for their great job on cleaning the streets. I can't tell you the last time I saw Blacktop from, you know, October to May. So I think they're doing a great job. So thank you.
Well said. I think everyone will agree.
Yeah.
We've heard, we've heard plenty of positive comments from the community numerous times. So, and I do hope that they do get carried on to you when, that you hear about them. So thank you, Kyle and Brian. Councilmember Ely, anything to report on?
No.
Councilmember McNeely.
No, I just want to thank Public Works for the ice rink. My children have been using it quite frequently and it's very nice.
Thank you. And Councilmember Health, anything to report on?
Not at this time.
I have nothing at this time either, as I have not had any meetings since our last council.
No, not today.
So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Same sign. We are adjourned.
Is EDA going to meet sometime?
Thanks again, Todd.
At the time apart.
Welcome to it. We will call the workshop to order. Call the workshop to order.
Handouts.
Handouts. Wonderful. Thank you.
Where the poop goes.
Did I explain this last? Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
So facility planning at your wastewater treatment plant, that's a fancy word for a report that we write in preparation for looking at, at needs out there, where you've been in the past, where you're going in the future, and what, what is needed as you look ahead to the future. And so with that, in, in a facility plan, this is a required item by the MPCA. It has required parts to it. Anytime you look at a piece like this, much like a street reconstruction plan or these capital improvement plans that you do on the, on the linear improvements, when you look at plants, we do the same thing. And try to develop a good plan for what, what things look like for the future. And that ensures that funding is funding good projects. It ensures the state's building good projects that meet their intent of treating wastewater throughout the state of Minnesota. And ensures you that the city mayor has a good infrastructure to serve their residents. So as part of that, these are the items I'm going to, I'm going to go through and we can go to the next slide. Nick, I kind of, I kind of pounded through this, but if you guys got questions on stuff, interrupt. So I, we know a lot about wastewater treatment. We, we are familiar with it and so can answer any questions. So, you know, looking at the history of your treatment plant, it was originally ponds. They did a great job as the community continued to grow. In 1999, a, a smaller packaged plant was built and that was upgraded about five years later to what sits out there today. Mechanical treatment plant with activated sludge, cold sludge storage, UV disinfection and filters before it discharges to the, to the river. It's a Class A facility. It's supported mayor well in the past and continues to work well for mayor. We'll kind of get into some of the issues that we see coming up. One of them is, is that you're approaching that 20 years. And that's our design period for a wastewater plant is that 20 years. Most of the time, the equipment can last about that long. It, it's about how far we feel comfortable projecting population and those type of things. And when we look at population, you'll see that it was probably over projected, that, that the bump that we saw in, you know, the late 2000s in the housing market, that, that slowed down a little bit. But there's some things out there that need to, need to take place. The other thing that happens in it with, with permitting is every five, or with a wastewater plant, is every five years you get a new permit out there. And recently, your new NPDs permit, your permit that says you may discharge to the state waters of Minnesota, came back with a new phosphorus limit and, and a chloride limit. And chloride is something that is in your water because of the water softeners primarily in everybody's home and business. You haul bags of salt down to your basement, fill your softeners, that gets recharged and that goes through the wastewater plant. So to comply with that, we asked for a variance from the state and we were granted a 15-year variance. And that's, that's the direction we're heading. For new, oh, hold on, I gotta go back to phosphorus. No, I'm kidding, Nick. For, for phosphorus, this is something that you, you remove right now. It's a slightly lower limit. But the, the catch on phosphorus is we ask for a compliance plan with the hopes of getting some grant money for building the improvements that, that we recommend at the end of this. Essentially more sludge storage or biosolid storage, because as you remove lower phosph, of lower phosphorus limits, we create more biosolids out at the wastewater plant doing so. Sorry.
Good to know.
I'm good. This is just a look at the population of mayor, currently at 2,400, 2,500 people. We're showing about a 70% growth over the next 20 years. Looking at that a couple of different ways, kind of following Carver County and looking at your past and, and where you're headed on stuff. That gives a nice amount of growth to the city, but also doesn't go wild, I guess, with, with where we're headed. I don't know if this is kind of one of those, I mean, if there's any thoughts or comments on this, if that. Yeah, you can kind of see the red line. It's, it's basically a straight line of where you, where you've been over the last, you know, 10 years that we project that would continue. We balance, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, we don't have any big development plans like on the table or that I've heard of either. So I mean, I don't know. I'll be curious. I don't know. I mean, a lot can happen, you know, but does that take? I know we had the 2040 comp plan, which shows that and shows where our growth could be. But we have a lot of land purchase that have to happen or contractors, you know, developers coming in.
And this is kind of a dialed back version of the larger Met Council type projections of how high you could go. This also fits in well with where your permits at. So when we get to the end, I'm not proposing to add a lot more treatment. The proposing is to take care of some of the 1999 infrastructure for biosolids. So that's kind of the, the idea with where this sits, is this fits in pretty well with your flows and loadings. And so the improvements that we're proposing doesn't necessarily add more capacity for these folks because you have capacity for that already. But it takes care of a problem area and biosolids and some difficulties that we have.
So our current plan, plant would support this growth. Okay. Good to know.
Did you look back at the old, when we first built this, we had 20-year projections. Did you look back at those and see how they compare?
Didn't. I thought of it, I thought of it when I was leading tonight, that that question might come up. So sorry, Mayor, I did not. We projected more because I can tell you from the, the flows and loadings that we have for out there is that with the, they're higher. Right? So if you go to the next slide, this is a, a nice indication of
You're permitted for this, this quarter 35.
Wow.
So quite a bit less.
What?
That's tempered with wet weather flow. So we get a heavy, we got a lot of I and I in the system, in the collection system. So that number doubles. It's closer, sometimes over 300,000 a day. So I mean, that's still, we got to hone in on and take care of. But once you fix one part, another part pops up. So that's something just once you fix one part, another part pops up. So, that's something just keep back in your mind. Hydraulically, if we didn't have any I and I, yeah, we could treat up to...
We've also had some dry years.
Right.
So, so that, that plays into these averages. So...
Right.
The, the gist of it is, is, is you're fine on the liquid side.
But do you have to ask, like, let's say we get a huge rainfall, do you have to ask if we're going to be over that point?
No, because we, we have the EQ pond out at the wastewater treatment plant, so we can divert some rainwater, stormwater flow, and some, you know, we have ways to stay within our limit and everything. But even then, we would still be fine currently, still shipping it all through the wastewater plant.
We still...
We don't like to wash out our bugs and everything.
But we still have some I and I that we should be addressing.
Kind of an ongoing item, right? And it never stops.
I indicated it, yeah. As soon as, as soon as you get the new stuff in, then the other stuff that was, you know, used to be 40 years old, it's now 50 years old, and that needs to be improved. So, it, it certainly helps, but I think it's, you know, the, the picture
here is, is that you, you're sitting pretty good on flows and loadings. You have capacity for what's needed into the future on this. Next slide. Just walking through your existing facilities, I needed a picture, Kyle, of your main lift station, but I didn't have a good one.
You should have texted me. I got a... I would have sent you a good one.
Basically, all the wastewater comes out, it, it goes into the, into the main lift station, and, and as Kyle indicated, from there, you can, if you end up with really high flows, you can divert part to the ponds to hold it. But then that, that pumps it into the main treatment facility and just basically lifts it up, right? So, you can only flow gravity for so long, and it just pumps it up and brings it in, so then we can flow by gravity through the rest of the wastewater plant. Minimal improvements is what we're proposing out there, just to upgrade some of the aging equipment and make sure it's good for another 20 years. Next slide. Equalization ponds. I mentioned those. It's returned through the plant. Basically, you can use that as a fill-draw type thing, and that we would propose to keep this as is. It's, it's in good shape and works fine for what, what the treatment plant needs. Lifesaver. Next slide.
And that was the old system.
It was. The idea is we try to utilize as much as we can, right, to, to do stuff, save costs and utilize infrastructure well. In the pre-treatment building, anything, in time you think of pre-treatment wastewater, we're removing typically trash and grit from pre-treatment. So, two, two things that we don't, we can't treat for. Trash is trash. We get it out, we take it to landfill. Grit is things like sand or heavier solids that aren't going to break down with biology. And so, we, we have processes to remove those. They can be hard on pumps, they can block things up. And so, in the pre-treatment building, we take that out of the wastewater and landfill it. Next slide. Biological treatment. This is kind of the, the workhorse of the wastewater plant. It's where we create good conditions for the biology to grow and eat, eat the waste in the wastewater. And so, by doing that, we give it a certain time to hold it. We provide a lot of oxygen to the biology to, to eat the waste, and then the, the biology settles out in the clarifiers, and, and then gets returned back to the process to keep eating. After it eats and eats and eats, just, just like all of us, we need to waste some bugs off that. So, there's a, there's a process where we take some of the solids off the bottom of those clarifiers, and we waste them. And those, that's what becomes the biosolids, or the sludge that is land-applied each year. And so, they, if you, you let them to keep eating, 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 they would just, they would overpopulate. They'd start coming over the sides of the clarifiers and go out to the river. And so, we take a portion of them out each day, and that, that becomes the biosolids. Kind of fascinating. If you're interested, we can talk more about it, but it's a pretty neat process. If you haven't been out there before, it's exciting. Agreed. After the clarifiers, it goes through true, two sand filters. There, there are technology that were great in the early 2000s. They're a bit outdated now, and we would look at upgrading those sometime in the future, but again, not needed right now. They're, they're meeting the intent of what's needed for Mayor. And then, then the final piece is, is UV disinfection. And UV disinfection is, is where we use ultraviolet light to, to inactivate the viruses and bacteria in the wastewater right before it's discharged. That's a, that's a process that pretty tried and true lasts about 15 years. And so, I've, I've, Kyle and I have talked a little bit about that, and I, this facility has done well to get it to last, we're at 19 years now, but certainly something we'd be looking at upgrading and just replacing that equipment in kind through that facility. And then discharge the Crow River. Next slide. The biosolids treatment and storage. So, to buy, in the biosolids treatment, we have some eration in there, and then we store it. You're looking in the building of the biosolids treatment, and this is the old packaged treatment plant. You can see it's kind of long and narrow. There's a walkway down the middle. Is it insulated right now, Kyle?
No.
It's not.
Does the stuff freeze?
Yes.
Excellent job, council member. Thank you for that lead-in. It does freeze, and there has been some concern with, with getting insulation over that and then breaking it up. It's also wasn't necessarily designed for biosolids treatment. It was an erosion basin that was utilized in 2004 to take advantage of some of the infrastructure that had been built out there five years earlier. And so, this is, this has been a nuisance, for sure, and, and undersized as, as you've grown, and then will continue to become more of a nuisance and more undersized as we remove more phosphorus with that new phosphorus permit or that limit as he, as he has to remove more, and as the community continues to grow. So, this is, this, in particular, the steel and wood structure with these concrete tanks are what we're proposing to replace with a true biosolids treatment, with a, with a, a tank that's made to hold biosolids, treat the biosolids contained, removes the safety concerns, takes care of some of the freezing concerns, and then provides a, a loadout for pumping them each fall and taking them out. That, along with some of the other miscellaneous improvements around the plant to pick up some of the maintenance items and get those taken care of.
So, the digester, we pump the waste and everything that Chris was talking about into here. We empty it out twice a year. We get it hauled out. We partner with Lester Prairie on it. And so, and then it comes, we got a empty tank again, so we start wasting. And then it, once it fills up, there's that little, little wheel there that, it's a decant spout. So, then we let it, we shut her off. The solid settled to the bottom, the clean water, supernate, comes up on top, and that gets recycled back through the wastewater plant. We can decant about three feet off, and we keep doing that process throughout the season until we haul out in the fall or the spring. And by the time we're ready to haul out, we cannot lower that spout much more than a foot because we're so full. And so, now when everything gets colder, it, we have to bubble it more and everything, keep, keep it from icing, that also shears the flock. And so, it makes it kind of fluffy, and it doesn't want to settle. So, it's just, it's a nightmare. And I'll just kind of leave it at that. So, I can keep going. And I got, I got a lot of pictures. And we have modified it over the years. We've, you know, we've cleaned the aerators, we've, you know, extended them out towards the walls. And we got a couple ideas for insulating, but we're gonna...
I was gonna say, can't we temporarily, or spray foam it or something?
Well, we talked about spray foaming it, but then you get into makeup air units and all that sort of thing, you know, and it gets kind of expensive. So, but we've just talked about some rigid foam board and just kind of laying it over, and then letting the liquid keep, you know, heat it, you know, keep itself warm, you know. So, because the water that's coming in there is pretty warm yet. So, that'll, you know, keep, I think it from icing up quite significantly. But we're planning on doing that project already, but it hasn't stopped snowing, so.
And, and so I just, you know, from a volume standpoint, it's about 177,000 gallons for the storage. Your required storage over the last seven years is 237,000 gallons. We're already about a, you know, 60,000 gallons short of where you, you should be at. That's going to be magnified. And then there's also this, he, he mentioned that you're hauling out spring and, and fall. And so, that, that continues to become more and more difficult with farmers because they don't want spring application.
Yes. Yeah, they want mostly fall application.
When you're on it in the spring, they talk about compaction. These are all these farmer terms I don't know about, so don't ask me, but it gets compacted. They don't like any extra tractors out there. And so, it, it becomes increasingly difficult to get rid of these biosolids in the spring. And so, we're actually proposing over a million gallons worth of storage to take care of a full year's worth of storage, plus the additional that we see from phosphorus, additional phosphorus removal.
When do we have to start that?
Soon.
When you say soon, like, what does that mean?
Yesterday, right? Chris will touch on that.
Okay.
We, we are talking about, you know, moving ahead in the next year, but let's, let's walk through this, because obviously, the other, the other next question is, what, what does that cost, right? Go ahead, next slide. Yeah. So, on the, on the phase one improvement, and, and I kind of hinted at this, right, is we don't really need the liquid improvement. And so, so we, we would look at a, a phase one improvement that touches on some of the items within the treatment plant to clean them up, some electronics, and making sure we're in good working order on the liquid side, but primarily focus on those biosolids system and correcting that. Within the biosolid system, we, we looked at actually four different options for biosolids. Option one is basically what you're doing now, but with increased storage. Option two is we could thicken it ahead of time with a process and, and then require less storage, but you need to build that process upfront. Option three is a completely different process where you add lime to the biosolids, and then that creates a little, a better product that, that disinfects the biosolids and provides a, a process for that. St. Peter does lime pasteurization. Northfield does lime pasteurization. Creates what's called a Class A biosolids. It's a little less regulated than a, a Class B, and, and can be helpful for communities in, in trying to get rid of this. With some of the future regulations that I see coming with PFAS, if you've heard of that term, the Forteplon, these forever chemicals and stuff, I'm not sure that lime pasteurization is a good process, and it, it costs more. De-watering and drying facility is, is probably more likely where you actually dry the biosolids to like a 98% solid, just be like a dirt consistency then. When things get that dry, all the pathogens or harmful things in biosolids basically die. They can't live in that dot dry environment. Again, it, it costs money to build these facilities. It greatly reduces volume, is the upside, and you end up with a Class A product. But when you, when you go to the next slide, it, it did not, the, these systems didn't, didn't make a lot of sense, the option two, three, and four. And so, we were, we were looking at option one for the next 20 years. It, it seems like the way regulations are going, that's a, that's a good, common sense way to handle biosolids. You're building storage. The city will never regret having storage for their biosolids. And if any regulations would tack on into the future, even out to, you know, 40 or 50 years, that storage facility could then be used with a process after or before it to, to meet the needs. And so, basically, trying to minimize the technology we're putting in at this point as, as some of these regulations flush out over the next 10, 20, 30 years. Next slide. See, so you can see here on the cost opinion, how, how the costs kind of increased with option three and four being, you know, roughly double of the first two. And, and you get a better pro, you know, a, a better treated product or biosolids from that, but right now, it's not a driving factor for the city of Mayor to get a Class A biosolid. So, so looking at those options with the aerobic digestion, the, you know, the, the four to $6 million range for that, that additional storage, and getting that cleaned up with the right pumping equipment, the right mixing equipment, so that it can be loaded out, moved out once a year, was what the recommendation was. Next slide. Another cost slide coming up with all the phase one items.
One second.
Yep.
So, on option one, the new biosolid storage for 2.1 million.
Yep.
Is that just updating our current building? What has to go into it, or what?
We're, I'm building a new tank.
Okay.
And so, if you, we also have, I have it on this one, but we would actually propose to demo that existing building. And so, when I get to the site, I'll, I'll be a site plan. That's where a future eration basin would go. And so, we would move out of that area completely and go to the north, build a new, a new tank, get it at the elevations we want it, get a pumping structure. So, one of the other challenges with biosolids is it's a little like, not quite the consistency of toothpaste sometimes, but it can be a little hard, hard to pump. So, you try to get your pumps down lower in that system, and you, you dig a little basement next to it, set a pump down low, so your tank's above it, and the, and the biosolids flow to it. So, it'd be a whole new biosolid system to the north, and we would completely abandon this.
I got confused, because the slide before this one, it said NA for the building, so...
Sorry.
I just got confused on that.
No, that's fine. Good question.
That explains it.
Yep.
So, in this, Chris, so new biosolid storage and then an anaerobic digester. So, currently, we just have an anaerobic digester.
Aerobic.
Aerobic.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry.
Woo.
But, uh, so currently, we just have the digester. We don't have any storage. So, this would have a storage. So, we treat it in our digester like we're currently doing, but now, once we get so thick, we can pump it to our biosolid storage. Correct, Chris?
And you can continue to decant off that and continue to thicken it.
And we can continue to thicken it, and it makes it, you know, more cost-effective hauling it out, too. The thicker we get it, the more bang for our buck as we haul it out, too. So, right now, 2% is pretty typical. Like, I've gotten over to just a little bit once in a while, but we, yeah, once you get it to four or five, then you really get a bang for your buck, because that truck is full.
We also see we need a smaller storage tank, and so, that's the 1.5 million there. The, the catch is, you got to build the thickening equipment to do that. Yeah. More buildings, more things to heat, additional technology and equipment to do that. Next slide, please. So, so, and I'll just touch on this briefly, but this would be the, you know, the phase two improvement. So, so if Mayor grows like gangbusters, and you hit this, you know, higher flows and, and loadings in 10 years, this would be the, this would be the time to, to build additional capacity at the pre-treatment in the eration basins, final clarifiers. We would replace the tertiary treatment, those traveling bridge sand filters, with a different filter technology to get more wastewater through it, and, and move on to that phase two, this, this improvement for liquid phase. The, the key here is, is, is the, or as needed, right, on the eration basins. Kyle can do a lot of maintenance on things out there. We can replace equipment as capital items as the, as they fail, and, and be proactive with that, because they're going to start giving hints of problems and, and maintain this system as he goes.
Which we've been doing with the capital improvement plan that we're currently in place.
Next slide. So, so you asked about timing, Councilmember McNeely. You know, looking at the biosolids, some of the SCADA, that, that first phase improvement, we'd be looking at, at trying to knock out over the next couple of years. Two reasons for that. One, one, it's needed. Two, there seems to be some positive funding aspects for this point source implementation grant that we hope to get some partial funding for the biosolid storage due to this phosphorus limit. Bonding bill this year, which is a non-typical bonding year, the legislature's talking about, that funds these grant programs. Hopefully, that kind of clears out a number of people who may be in front of you for those grant programs, and then sets it up for a 2024 bonding year, which is your typical state bonding year to fund these programs again, to where you can potentially pick up some, some grant money to cover some of the cost of additional storage. And then, you know, looking ahead, we're saying, you know, five, 10 years out, but it, it's, it's more likely further out than that. It's just depending upon things that we don't know yet as far as, you know, population growth and any regulation, other regulation that would drive that phase two project.
Now, you don't have a crystal ball, and this may be somewhat a loaded question, but just based on your experience on grants and what you've seen in the past, I mean, for a project like we're looking at for phase one, are we talking like $2 million, half it, or are we talking 200,000, or do you, do you kind of have a little, a little idea you can get?
Million.
Oh, okay.
What I'd like to get.
So, and, okay.
Yeah.
So, a considerable chunk of the project.
I think I have two and a half million in, in the facility plan.
Okay.
Is what I try to get, because if... Is what I try to get. Cause if you, if you, if we go ahead to the actual cost of the next slide, it, it, the cost of the, the whole project is actually a little larger because we have the bio solids portion of it. But then, but then we also, we also need to add in some lift station improvements, clarifier improvements, electrical upgrades, SCADA, which is the control system. So these systems that just become outdated after so many years. And then this is where I show the existing bio solid storage demo as well as getting that, getting that opened up. So, so, you know, seven to nine million dollar project, if we can pick up two, two and a half million, that'd be a, I feel like that'd be a pretty good success.
Is that something you guys write grants for? Or did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Stage one is the facility plan. So stage one is the facility plan, the public hearing for the facility plan, the approval of the facility plan, these are due by March 3rd. To be submitted, we get on the list, which is called the project priority list, the PPL, and that's with the MPCA. Then we also, the city will send a letter to the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, which is the bank for these grant programs and ask to be put on the intended use plan that you intend to move forward with this. Does it commit you to anything? It just gets you on the funding list. That's step, step two of the process. Then you're on that IUP and then in July, we'll apply for the point source implementation grant, which is the PSIG grant. That's up to 80% of eligible project costs, maximum of $7 million. So that, so the key there for you is eligible project costs. There's a whole bunch of things here that aren't necessarily eligible or aren't associated with phosphorus removal. A portion of the bio solids is associated with phosphorus removal. You're going to create more bio solids by having removed phosphorus. And so that's where we're, you know, we, we want to advocate for the city of mayor to get, you know, that, that 80% of the bio solids roughly covered. The bullet at the bottom also is, is important and, and, you know, this is, you know, you heard Todd just leave and Thaler's, but you know, it, it rain impact is, is fairly large, 25 to $30 per month with getting, with, with getting a grant like that. The, the catch with that then is that is offset with your existing debt payment. Do you remember Nick when the deck, sorry to put you on the spot, that, that should come off here in the next year.
2025.
Yeah. So then that payment would go to this debt payment and help offset, offset those capital improvement charges so that council could ease into rates, rate increases go along with the idea that it, it more regular rates. But it, it's, things are expensive. There's, there's no way around that.
So the ideal timeline is, this is like phase one of the whole process this year. Next year would be actually probably bidding out and then it would be completed in 2025 if it all went as planned.
Skip ahead two or three slides.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine. Keep going. One more. So this is, this is kind of the, the, the schedule for what, what that would look like. And, and so submit facility plan in 20, in February. We get on the lists. We would, we would propose to start preliminary design also right away to get survey out there, geotechnical reports out there. Take our, take our 50,000 foot plan and, and start landing the plane down to 10,000 to get some, some better drawings put together as to what this is going to look like and refine the cost opinions on it. Apply for PSIG in July 2023. And then at that point, the idea is is that by end of summer, fall timeframe, we should have a little better picture of what funding looks like. And then we can make a final decision on the next, you know, larger cost is final design. In order to get on these lists and move up the lists, you need certified plans and specifications submitted to the state. So we just talked through what that takes and, and get that through. Certainly one of the costs, you know, your smaller costs is the design fees upfront. And then the real committal is when you take bids and need to award the contract. And that's, you know, that's when you get into the, into the millions of dollars on that, which would be potentially summer, fall 2024. And about 18 month construction schedule. I say about 18 month because normally I'd say this could go a little faster, but supply chain issues and all that stuff that you've probably heard about way too much that I won't pour you with affects it. If that stays bad like that, it could be a 24 month construction schedule for some of the electrical items. I'm going to, I'm going to ask, can you go back to now? This, oh, yeah, this one, this is, this is the phase two project to expand the wastewater plant. You know, that, that 12 to 16 million dollar range on that next phase. So these, these things don't get cheaper, right? And the whole plant was probably built, built for three, $4 million when it was done in 2004. So I mean, it, it, you know, it, it really compounds over the years as far as the expense of these projects. I, I showed that just, just so you guys are aware that, I mean, there's a, there's additional cost coming with growth and, and into the future of replacing or needing water. So is phase two driven more by growth? You would, if it, if you had, if we had issues with a phosphorus limit, like another phosphorus limit that keeps getting driven down or something, we might have to do like the disc filter portion of it, you know, 750. So a couple million dollar project to get a piece of equipment or something. Otherwise, you know, eration basins, diffusers, some of those can just be a lot of capital bases as, as we see signs that they need to be fixed. Yep. So growth or permitting, permit issues. Other things on the permit horizon are the PFAS, which I've already mentioned, the perfluoro Teflon chemicals. Total nitrogen is another thing that's on the permitting horizon. But again, we, they tend to give you a long time to react and, and comply with them. So building ahead of time doesn't do anybody any favors. Right? Yep. The next slide on just the site. This is, this is where, you know, we talked about, you know, demoing out the existing bio solids. There's one clarifier within that building too, that isn't really usable and we would like to get that usable for treatment redundancy. And that, that would be part of that plan. And then building the new bio solids, digester storage and loadout to the north, creating a spot where trucks can turn around, a nice loadout facility with containment underneath and, and set it up.
Currently our, our tank, a pumper truck pumps it out. It takes forever to fill the truck. So having a pump, a loadout station, turn the pump on, fill the truck within a few minutes, they can move on their merry way. So definitely a huge benefit in saving
And demolition of the existing building, is that just to clean up the site? There's not any other reason to demo it, correct?
We could leave it if, if we wanted to.
It's like, okay.
Is there any reason to have that there for any other use to keep the existing? I mean, is there a reason why? I mean?
The, the one reason I have why is because as I, as I described, we're at the 50,000 foot level. I need to do something with that final clarifier to get it to work right. I anticipate there might be some interaction with the side of that clarifier, which is right now connected in with that building. So that, that's one functional item that I anticipate I'm going to need to demo some stuff through there to get that to work.
Yeah. Currently the lines run through into the, the digester. So.
It, it, it's not, it, it would not be a required item. So if that was something that council's like, no, we just want, don't want to do that. I showed it at 200,000. I mean, that would be also something that if we got to bid time and you're like, hey, let's, let's get some clarity on what that costs. We can add a bid alternate for what that is. And then you can decide if it, you know, there's potential for it to come in real low too, because somebody's like, oh, we want to, we've got to want to keep a crew busy and we want the concrete and rebar out of it.
Yeah. I guess I was just curious if there was any other usage for it.
I, I, I don't. It's, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't. Not well set up for, for stuff we need to do. That's the problem we're up against now. Now, now with that, council member, you, you have had the advantage of using it for the last 20 years. So it, it has provided the city a good value over the years. It's just as you grow and as this thing gets bigger, rather than, you know, ta- take some money off of that cost estimate and cobble it together with this system, with the existing system, and then still have a setup that isn't, where it doesn't work real well, I'm recommending that we go off to the side and build new. The, the other advantage of that is when you look at a 20 year growth or when you need to add new eration basins, they should go right there. And there's, you know, if you think about this hydraulic profile, what we call it, where when we pump up with that main lift station, it flows through by gravity. By putting it there, it's in the right spot that we can set up the hydraulics so it all flows through by gravity. One of the advantages of wastewater treatment plants is that you don't have to pump it multiple times because it's extra equipment, extra cost and electricity to, to set those pumps. So we try to get it, so you only pump it once and then it's out. But could that, could that wait or could we evaluate that later on?
Other piece of the digester that just popped in my head too, we actually alter, alter, have to back off on how much we waste in order to not overload the digester. So we let our eration basins kind of fill up to that 5,000 mark where you kind of want to leave it and not go above that. And that's when you start getting foaming in the basins and that sort of thing. Treatment's still good. We've managed, you know, this long, but this is why we started this process with the facility plan and everything to get this moving before it's too late, I guess you should say.
It is proactive, right? And so, so you, you wait a couple of years, we could come to you and say, hey, your liquid treatment is messed up because he can't waste what he needs to. We're full in the bio solids. We're not getting it out. Lester Prairie's not taking it as much as we need to bring it. And then, and then we're into a, we need a, we need to set up an emergency temporary, you know, a sledge bag or something and put, put bio solids in there and set something temporary where we build a new facility. So this is, you know, from that sense, it's in a good spot. I try not to be real doom and gloom and I, and I know Kyle has.
You've got to scare him a little bit.
Yeah. But proactive with what we're doing and, and help, help everybody understand kind of how, what, what, what we're thinking.
Yeah, we just didn't want to get it to that point. So this is why it's.
Other questions? At this point, no. So it's the next time you'll see me is for the public hearing, I've, I've got, there's some required items we have to go through for MPCA. It'll be a little faster and I'll rattle through it. I don't think to date I've ever received any public comments on a facility plan and I've been doing this a while. So not, not a real public grabber on that standpoint.
Thank you both for coming out.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move to the city hall LED conversion. So in December of last month, I had requested from Excel Energy and CenterPoint to come out and do a joint energy audit of our city facilities. The CenterPoint end of things did not drum up anything really worthwhile on the Excel energy side of things. One big meat and potato item that came out of there that I think has been talked about a little bit is the LED conversion of the existing lights we have here because these are T8s. And then out in the hallway and then in the gym space where the stage is, and then you have the high, high bay lights that are in the gym themselves. And then you have some kitchen lights in our commercial kitchen as well. So thank you, guys. So that was the big meat and potatoes that came out of that. So we're putting in front of council just to go over that portion of the energy audit to get an idea. Kyle's working on obtaining some quotes. We have two quotes to do this work. We're just vetting through them a bit more to make sure we've got apples to apples on everything. And the idea is you would retrofit, retrofit or replace 80, or I'm sorry, 65 fluorescent fixtures with type B LED lamps. We're looking at two styles. One would be the retrofit the existing. So what you do is you bypass the ballast with new LED bulbs and they wire them right in. Otherwise we're getting an option to replace the fixtures entirely. And this, the style we'll be looking at would be a troffer light, which I'm sure everybody has seen.
Same things.
Pretty standard office type of light, if something were to be constructed here today. So we're getting quotes for those two options. This energy audit was done on a retrofit basis. The retrofit is, the quotes we're looking at, the retrofit is cheaper than doing the troffer lightings, the troffer lighting, sorry. The quote that we get, the low quote that we got is coming in at about that $13,700 mark. It was pretty close to that. And then the one for the troffer lighting came in about 23. So it's $10,000 more than that. I've asked Excel to come back and if we did the troffer lighting, take a look at this and say, what would it look like if you did the troffer lighting? What kind of rebates would we be looking at versus the retrofit? Just to get an idea. But right now you're looking at about, with the retrofit, you're looking at an annual cost savings at about $1,700 in electricity costs from going from the T8s to the LEDs. And you're currently looking at about $4,000 in rebates with a retrofit. So your payback period comes to about just under six years at 5.7 years on that. Excel also has a commercial streamlined assessment bonus incentive. My understanding is if you execute your project within 10 months, you qualify for this program and you get another 40% on your rebate. So it'd go from four to six essentially. And you can see that there, there's the incentive at 4,000. And then it bumps up to the six there when we take advantage of this commercial streamlined assessment bonus incentive. So just verifying things with Excel on that, getting some added figures there.
That was added. Why is the, the ROI 5.7 versus?
Here's your ROI with this, the commercial streamlined, it goes from 5.7 to four and a half.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
With the commercial streamlined approach. So that's where we're at. Again, the two quotes we got for the retro was about the same for the cost estimate, just under 14. And then the one for the troffer lighting replacements was about 23 we looked at.
And we levied for a portion or?
Yeah.
I can't remember what you had lowered it to.
So it's $50,000 and that's, that was to look at the LED lighting replacement, perhaps redo the ceiling tiles. And I know when we hire the third person, we're going to look at office arrangement to make sure that's the right fit in there. So between all that, we can figure that out. So really that's the update I got on the workshop. A lot shorter than the wastewater treatment plan. I had to follow that up. So.
I think that ROI at 5.7, I think we should, I don't see us putting up a new building in, in that time. I mean, I think it's worth moving forward and, and doing it.
I think this building, this building will service us for a long time.
Right. And the ballast, we wouldn't have to worry about anymore. And burnt out light bulbs in the gymnasium before our wedding and getting scaffolding and all that stuff, we shouldn't have to worry about anymore because there'll be more reliable LEDs. We do plan on putting them on a switch versus having individual breakers on each one. So we're going to extenuate that as well. So, yeah, it's going to be a little bit more.
Will they turn on faster?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Instead of like warming up, it takes like 10 minutes?
Significantly brighter too.
Yeah.
No buzzing. It'll instantly be on with light. We're looking at a 4K light versus like a 5K or a 3. It's just that more, it's not that bright, bright daylight that you get, but it's not that orangey light. It's just that.
Daylight.
In the middle.
Daylight.
Are they Alexa enabled too?
We should.
Yeah. And then the LEDs, if we went to the new troffer indirect style, they're a little bit brighter than if we were to retrofit. And so there's some positives. I think it's , of course, cost being the big one, the retrofitting and plus buying new. So.
The troffers look nicer too.
Yeah.
A little bit more decorative.
Yeah.
All right.
They're the one, they're the style you see in any.
But we're waiting to hear back on that portion.
Right. I just wanted to present the information, what we've got. We got it. We're going to vet the quotes just a little bit more to make sure they're apples to apples. And I want to get updated. And I want to get updated rebate information on the troffer versus, because this is based on the retrofit versus the troffer. So I want to make sure when I come to council, I've got all the accurate information. I'm just saying, I think we're going to give out this much. But they should be able to turn this around and be ready for the February council meeting, I would think.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's great.
That was it for the energy.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
Other questions?
No.
All right. Then we will adjourn.